We are going live here. So the two screens to my right, your left would be live. The screen to your, your right, my left would be just a camera audience and the TV behind us. The video wall, just the audience view also, so you don't have to see us twice. So, okay. We are live on YouTube at this time. So we'll call this common council. If the council would like to use the microphones now would be the time to use them. You see the green lights up there. They can hear us out there in YouTube world. But you know, the signal is the green lights down there. The speakers are above them out there. So we are being picked up on YouTube. Yeah, it turns red and it will pick you up from a distance too. So just to make sure we're loud and clear on the YouTube channel. So, all right, let's go ahead and call this common council regular session July 2025 to order. You guys in all would please rise, face the flag and say the pledge with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I am joined by Jake Gensis for the first time.
That bond.
You guys. We're not voting live.
She left.
Mr. Duff here. Yeah, that's, that's the word of the word. You guys, we'll be live. Mr. Duff here. Back.
Okay. I'm going to do it on Facebook. I know people by names, no faces. Yellow faces. She's able to sit down. Yeah, no effects. Please counsel me.
Yeah, I'm here. There we go. All right, we're good. All right, Ms. Pitts, would you give the roll call?
Mayor Wilson.
Hey, President.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember Bonham.
Here.
Councilmember Mayfield.
Here.
Councilmember Brown is not. Councilmember McLaughlin.
Here.
Attorney Fallowwell.
Here.
Police Garrett.
Here.
Fire Robertson.
Here.
All right. Has the council had time to review the minutes from the prior meeting? And if you have, is there a motion to accept? Is there a second?
Second.
Let's remember white second.
All right, so councilmember Bonham.
I guess I wouldn't.
You're going to abstain. Okay. Councilmember Mayfield. Councilmember McLaughlin.
Aye.
And councilmember White.
Aye.
Okay. Three ayes, one abstain.
Okay. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? Do they have anything to add or take away? Hear nothing. Moving on down to old business. See nothing on old business. New business. Melissa Nesting was mental health project coordinator for partners for drug free Sullivan County. You are up. It's like to step to the mic and as long as the green light's on there, address the board. Melissa Nesting.
My name is Melissa Nesting and I am the new project coordinator for, with Mental Health of America. And thank you guys for having me today. Thank you.
Do you have anything to address with us or just introduce yourself?
I was just introducing myself.
We're waving at all the audience out there. Everybody, this is Melissa Nesting. She is here to introduce herself for the mental health project coordinator for partners for drug free Sullivan County. So, yeah. All right, thank you. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too.
Any other new business? No other new business? Okay, we'll jump into the bar.
Didn't see that one coming.
Yeah. Move tonight. You got it. You created everybody.
You've seen this and so I got passed down.
So I went back and added that one to this. So I've copied the other. Okay, but I knew I had taken that off because it was supposed to be resolution.
Item being under new business will do resolution. What's the number? Twenty twenty five?
Three, I think.
Resolution twenty twenty five. Three.
Yeah, so I, because I went back and added that and I just copied the other one. My bad.
It's on there now.
Yep.
It's new business.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, I mean.
Just talk about what we're going to try to do and then I'll.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that was really good. So, yeah, we are, just like this resolution states here. For a while now, I know I've had several meetings in the past, over the last year and a half that I've been mayor here. I know public safety has been a hot topic. Funding public safety has been the topic. And so now the resolution here is to investigate, consider establishing fire protection territory. I've had a lot of conversations with Hamilton Township, Fire Chief here, Councilman Brown, he's not here, but all the other council members here. We've spoke individually in the past about this. And so now it is a resolution. I think the council has wanted to present this tonight and talk about it so we can discuss it right now. But it's a resolution to investigate further into a fire territory. At times in the past, we thought that might be the best course of action to take. With Senate Bill One coming out earlier this year, with public safety not being established here in Sullivan County. All these things have added up and come to a point where fire protection is a must. Fire protection to the citizens here in Sullivan, you know, we have to protect the citizens of Sullivan here. This board does. Okay, and myself day to day, I have to provide them with some protection. So this has come back up now. There's a lot of other mayors I've spoken to in the state of Indiana who are looking at this if they haven't already. Been involved with the fire territory. Fire territory is a step in the fire protection where it brings different entities together and will increase the funding and revenue. So revenue lost in the future for the city of Sullivan, this is resurfaced now. And the council has taken action to create this at least, and we'll see what they do with it right now. So discussion from the council on this resolution and fire territory.
Well, Becky and Scott and I attended a meeting with Owen County over in Spencer. And they established the fire territory to expand their coverage and also to hopefully increase their budget for obvious reasons. Spencer's not as big as Sullivan, and I didn't exactly know how big their territory was. But they, there's a lot of advantages to it, simply because of the added tax revenue or added income to the department that could be had from other townships. We have two in the county now. We have Thunderbird and we have Dugger. They're both fire territories. So this is nothing new, Sullivan County. I thought it was interesting. I thought they were prepared to tell us what was going on there. And overall, I think, I think they were very pleased.
They did too.
And supportive of the fire territory. So thinking about it here, having mentioned Thunderbird and Dugger, that leaves four townships left in the county. We do a lot of runs and Robbie could address this to Termon and Gil. That leaves Haddon, Carlisle. I know they have their own department and they take a lot of pride in that. But what I'm saying is this could be more than mutual aid. It could be coming together to, to enhance our situation income wise and help everybody. Patty had a map there in oh five or twenty years ago, there were not very many fire territories in the state of Indiana. In 2017, twelve years later, that number had tripled. And I noticed on the map that the, this is not just rural counties necessarily. There's a fire territory down in Evansville, which includes Vanderburgh County. Probably not the city of Evansville. But I just think it's a sign of the times and it obviously has some advantages or we wouldn't see it cropping up around the state of Indiana. So that's really all. I can't really get into the details of what it entails. Obviously, it would take action by governmental agencies to set it up, not just here, but also in the townships run by a board that had, in their example, they had a chief and an assistant chief of the territory. And they were, they were managed by a board that was selected before it would get started. So that's kind of how it works as far as I can tell. I love you, Jamie.
Excellent presentation to us, didn't you think?
Yes, I did.
Explained it detail. I think that they were, they're very happy with the way it's, it's turned out for them.
There were some changes. There were, they talked about, when it was enacted, the town of Spencer, the fire department there, some of the members were somewhat shocked and perhaps upset, which they knew was going to happen. But after I think it got into motion, they were on board. So. I mean, it would be a change from what we have now, but if you've come to our meetings, you know how critical funding is for fire and police and first response. So anything I think we can do to help better that, I'm all for. So that's where we stand on that.
Thomas, if I can add to?
Yeah, please. Owen County also said that their volunteer department, so they're trying to get to a paid department. So we're already a paid department and if we would go territory, we'd still be able, you know, be able to stay a paid department. But Owen County, they're trying to get to a paid department. So that's another reason why they went to the territory as well.
Correct.
The other thing that I think we brought up that one meeting I was with Patty was the fact that I think we'll have a lot better chance of getting the manpower we need because it's going to more, be more, I think receptive as far as individuals go, want to be firefighters. I think it'll look more like a permanent setup.
Yeah, they talked about that. They have the same problems that we do when we train. And, you know, the firefighters, the police officers, medical staff, they, they are looking to better themselves. So we deal with Terre Haute, maybe then sends, they deal with Bloomington. So it's the same thing. And I think that, that's a good point, Gene, because I think it sets up a, a better opportunity for them. And it is kind of dependent, when you say Rob, on, on volunteers.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to get volunteers.
It is hard.
Anything to come out because they've got, you know, their own jobs and.
Correct.
It's going to get worse as the requirements.
Yeah, there's a lot of requirements that the volunteers has to have now, you know, that has regulations and so forth.
Hey, guys.
The other, the other thing too, I think is, is the equipment. I may be wrong here, but I think we're going to end up needing less equipment because there's a lot of duplications going on. And we may need different equipment of some kind, but, and I know we'll need to update a lot of equipment because I know we've got a lot of old equipment we're working with. But that'll give us a better chance, or them a better chance, to keep their equipment up to date. And we won't be duplicating equipment. So I think there's a lot of pluses, just like you were talking about, in addition to the fact that it's going to help financially the township and the city. And the territory, the fire protection territory is going to have more income, more revenue coming in.
Right.
So it's one of those, I think, win-win situations that we.
It looked like it to me. I mean, I want to learn more. And, you know, Hamilton Township has been very good with us and good to us. And I was sitting there thinking, well, this would make them part of us as opposed to they're there and we're here. Because, I mean, Hamilton Township is basically the city of Sullivan anyway. So I thought that would be a step in the right direction to work together because if we don't work together here or anywhere else, it's going to be even more difficult. That's just the, that's the motto going forward. Better shake each other's hand, not argue about it and get something done that can help us all. So.
I thought Jeffrey Kennett did a really good job that night to keeping that meeting on track and.
He's important here because he has done some research on it. So I think the council, mayor and anybody that's interested would learn valuable information from that. So. About all I got to say. And the resolution, as I understand, is to show our support for learning more.
Uh, no, I, I think, um, actually, Joe, for presenting it.
Yeah.
And I think the resolution will probably include a lot of what he's already said. So.
Yeah, it's not unwanted services, a needed service that we need to provide. And it's a security, I think, is what you're kind of learning to with the additional funding coming together, additional manpower coming together, strengthening a team to be able to fight, fight those fires and necessity that we have to have.
It's a resolution. There is, is our show of support for learning more about it. We're not voting on it tonight.
Now, I think it's just, it's a resolution to investigate, consider establishing a fire protection territory. So if this gets passed, I'll have some comments afterwards if it does get passed. Doug, do we need to take a vote to read it by title only or is this a resolution? We need to read all of it or?
I think you should read all of it.
Okay.
Puts out the necessity in some detail. Puts out the key points that have brought us to this.
You want me to read it or you read it?
I'll read it.
Big problem.
Yeah.
Got it. Got it.
So I've been involved in this for, I think this is my fourth administration I've served a city attorney under. Might be the fifth. I lost count, but anyway. It's been dynamic in the last several years. I can tell you that. It continues to be that way. But there's a lot going on with one thing or another. So the resolution is 2025-3. So it's a resolution to investigate, consider establishing a fire protection territory. And says, whereas the city of Sullivan has conducted multiple studies to evaluate and improve fire protection services for its residents, every study has shown an imbalance of shared financial burden. And I'm in that regard, kind of, Scott Brown's been involved in this quite heavily too. He's spent a lot of time on it. He's not here tonight. He's out of the country. He's the president. I'm not going to call. Anyway, it goes on and says, whereas the city of Sullivan is committed to achieving top tier public safety and implementing a fair and sustainable funding formula for emergency services. And whereas since the implementation of property tax caps in 2010 and further constraints imposed by Senate Enrolled Act One in 2025, the city has faced significant limitations on its revenue generating capacity. And whereas the city's prior attempt to annex appropriate territories in 2013 was unsuccessful, further restricting its ability to equitably fund fire protection services. And whereas Sullivan County has not adopted a local option income tax for public safety, this is what Mr. Kennett was doing, but I had comments about and explained some of that. But unlike neighboring counties that do have a public safety tax, such as Vigo, Green and Knox, leaving municipalities without a critical source of funding for emergency services in, that's of course in our county. Whereas the citizens of the city of Sullivan have been subsidizing fire and rescue services, among many other municipal services for areas outside of the city limits, and that's police and fire, for nearly half a century, creating a financial imbalance that is no longer sustainable. Whereas the city of Sullivan believes that all individuals and properties receiving public services, including fire and rescue protection, should have the financial responsibility of supporting those services. Whereas the city of Sullivan, along with every other city, town, township and county in America, continues to experience rising costs related to inflation, increased salaries, insurance premiums per contributions, operating expenses, maintenance, utility costs and facility needs. And whereas the cumulative impact of these financial pressures, along with a steady reduction in property tax revenue due to escalating circuit breaker losses, has placed the current fire protection funding model no longer adequate. So there, so now therefore, yet resolved in conclusion, is necessary prudent for the city of Sullivan to investigate and consider establishing a fire protection territory in collaboration with Hamilton Township, Termon Township and any other township interested in receiving high level services to establish an newly formed territorial fire department. Consolidating resources and governance to provide efficient, equitable and sustainable fire protection services to the citizens of this jurisdiction. Approved this. They have, it's got signature blocks here for the council, approved by the clerk treasurer, Sue Pitts, and executed by the executive mayor Wilson. So that's the resolution that's being proposed for consideration of fire, establishing a fire protection territory.
Okay, is there a motion to accept this resolution? Councilmember Mayfield, is there a second? Councilmember Bonham?
Councilmember White. Councilmember McLaughlin.
Aye.
Councilmember Mayfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Bonham.
Pardon.
All ayes.
Okay.
You know, just as in the site, I was at a commissioners meeting last night and when Mayor Smith was the mayor, Herman Smith, we, there was an attempt to annex Walmart and Greenbrier and so forth, but it fell through because of technical remonstrators and so forth. And I know last night at the meeting, one of the residents out of Greenbrier was there asking the commissioners to help them pave their road out around Greenbrier. I thought, now if they'd been annexed, it'd probably been paved a long time ago by the city of Sullivan in addition to other services that we would be providing to Greenbrier, that we're already providing. But any event, I just thought that was ironic that that came up last night and we're doing this tonight. But the annexation would have helped the city greatly and it would have helped those areas too, property values in a whole lot of other ways. That's just me. I'll give it my opinion.
As I sign this resolution, I just want to say thank you to the council for this resolution because I think I did believe it's a step in the right direction. Like it says, investigate. So I'll go forward starting tomorrow and investigate even further and provide you guys with some information on it. Court-like timelines, dates, financial impacts, tax rate, what it does to that tax rate of Hamilton Township, city of Sullivan, any other townships that may want to enter into it with us. So there's, there's still additional information to provide and to gather. And I do appreciate the council passing this resolution tonight. All right, as that gets finished being signed, let's go ahead and start department reports. Chief Garrett, you're up.
For enough generally, I had 256 total calls of service. Outside of that, I know some of you guys were, somebody vandalized our front door. Been in communication with Linting Glass, so they do have, they have ordered the door. And as soon as that comes in, they'll be replacing that.
You got an idea when it's being?
No, no, I was just calling when it comes in. So.
Okay. Questions for Chief Garrett? Aaron Nunn? Chief Robertson, you're up. Fire.
We have a total of 138 calls for June, eighty, eighty calls for the medic. And then we got fifty-eight calls for the fire and rescue. Everything else has been gone fine. Still dealing with the path that's going on out there at the fire station. And also want to thank you guys for passing the resolution for the given territory.
Any questions for Chief Robertson? Aaron Nunn? Mr. Barkhardt, you're up.
I don't have a copy of the list.
Go ahead. That's all right. Last three days, what's the street and utilities been doing?
It's the same as always, keeping up with, you know, brush.
Fighting a good fight out there on the streets.
Mowing.
Go ahead, tell us.
Sure projects. We have currently, I think, three operating at the same time. And we're getting ready to start probably tomorrow on the drainage issue on East Chaney Street there at the railroad tracks. Start digging there. We've also, last couple of days, we installed a new lateral for the restrooms at the city park that had issues. And we replaced a manhole structure top on Cross Street in about the 300 block. That was basically a man-built structure, but the top had given way. So we formed and built one new frame and lid and asphalt. I know it said Monday will now be Thursday. Normal operations to plant day-to-day testing. We are currently going through our DMR QA study for the state. So that just basically certifies our lab tech is doing exactly what she should be doing properly. That's about all I got.
On Chaney, what, will that eliminate that pond there or?
We hope so. Yes. Yes. Yep. Yep.
Any other questions for Tony and utilities? Are there any citizens present to address the city council tonight? Yes, ma'am. Would you like to come up to the podium? We need you up here at the microphone. So. I believe the green light's still on on the microphone. If you push the button on the side of the microphone.
We have a property on Missouri and Main Street, right there on the corner. The house was damaged during the tornado. They've tore the house down, but they pushed everything into the basement and the basement is starting to fall in. They've not been back and did anything with this property. The grass is just way high. It's becoming a safety hazard, honestly. I mean, we're getting smaller kids back in our neighborhood and somebody needs to look at it.
The corner.
Well, it's just the whole lot. Yeah, right there.
The two lots next to it also.
Uh, the one lot the trucking company bought and he has cleared it off. But the one, next one up, yeah, it's weeds also.
Oh, I was under the impression that he had purchased all three of those lots. He had purchased two and he was in the final negotiations of the third lot, which is the lot that you're currently asking about. So I don't know if it did get transitioned over to the new owner or not.
But I mean, the basement part's filling up with water, mosquitoes, bugs. I mean, it's a safety hazard. There's concrete, big concrete blocks all around it and.
Does the code enforcement officer have your name and number?
I don't know. He's a code enforcement officer.
I got it there. If you give him your name and number, he will reach out tomorrow and try to get a person on the phone.
I think it's Shonda Colson. I'm not for sure though.
Again, the person that purchased that or two said he was in the.
Okay.
Getting that one.
Yeah, I don't know his name.
Either that person that you just mentioned or the new owner.
Yeah.
And he can reach out to both of them to find out. He can also look on the system to see whose name is under right now. Doesn't mean it's caught up and transferred over if there was a sell or a purchase between the two parties. But he can definitely get you some information, leave him your name and number, and he'll address it.
Yeah. Like I said, we got a lot of kids in the neighborhood coming back and what's a kid gonna do? Hmm.
I will say, I have talked to the one individual supposedly that bought one or two of the lots and he said he was going to come in and clean and mow it up. He did do a little bit, but he didn't do it all of it. We're trying to get back all of it again and again and try to.
Yeah, because I mean, there was never anything done with that corner lot except the house tore down. Yeah, I didn't know if he had bought it or.
I'll look into it again tomorrow.
I just know the last owner of it and it's, it's a mess.
Cindy.
Yeah.
The camper.
Oh, yeah. Oh, one bird. And they put a camper on the other trucking company again. Someone's living there again.
Yes.
It's not the same camper.
Yeah. Yep. Once he gets your number and name and it's all code enforcement right now down there to where we'll address everything down there and get it caught up. This is the summer that everything needs to have, you know, action taken to it or.
I mean, they've got a storage, little storage unit, fire pit, launches. I mean, I don't know the situation, but. I knew you said no one was supposed to be on there camping or whatever. So.
Yeah, they had moved the camper out. I know him and I were both together whenever I did speak to the brother of the owner. All these, it's a family of them, huh?
It's a Bailey.
No, I ain't talking.
Cindy, sidewalks and lights. Sidewalks and lights.
Good job, Jackie.
Are you saying I need to get the handheld mic out?
Yeah, can I go?
To the back, yeah.
Streetlights. We need them.
Okay. Yeah. And this one would be on me. I know you addressed this several times. It's on me in the last 30 days because I did see something come across my email for a contract of, I, I don't know if they're, they're right. I know the street superintendent had talked to Duke, the lighting. And I seen an overlay of where they were wanting to put the lights. I really, I need to, it's on me right now to get them the contract signed for, I think there's four additional lights. I think I described to you guys, it's going to be that long block halfway down on Court Street, Main Street, State Street and Ohio Street to where I think there's four additional lights coming. I just have to sign that and get it to Duke. Then they'll have to go through their process of ordering the material. I don't think wooden poles are as hard as getting like bigger poles. So I can't tell you the time. But in the last 30 days, I did see a contract come across my email that.
And what about the sidewalks?
Sidewalks are still ongoing. I mean, it's the same, status hasn't changed.
I personally don't want one on our street, but some of the other neighbors do.
And, you know, yeah, they're, they're a topic, sidewalks, curbs, everything down there is a topic that we were trying to, you know, it goes back to funding and, you know, what's out there and what can we do? And there's, there's some things going in the works to where I'm trying to pull that together and hopefully have you a better answer than that.
Actually, you say that, a curb might be good coming like down Missouri and you turn on Ohio, like you're going to the sewer plant, but you turn. We're right there on the corner. And Ohio Valley Gas put one of their poles right there on the corner. I'm waiting for somebody to come around that corner and hit it. We might take a curb. That'll stop a car.
Take a curb but no sidewalk.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens present to address the board? Yes, Mr. Compton, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to talk about the resolution that was passed. So in the resolution, it kind of explained the need and it talked about how we are going to get additional funding for the territory and for fire safety. But I don't know, it wasn't really explained how exactly that could happen. Will they, will there be more grant opportunities for the fire territories or is this more just about consolidation?
Are you specifically asked about funding?
Yeah, you talked about.
Consolidation, it brings tax rates to this, you know, the equal playing field for all, all the people inside those districts. You know, it would increase the revenue through the property taxes.
Okay. So it's just about bringing all those tax entities together?
That would increase the revenue as consolidation and, you know, townships, city of Sullivan, they would all combine and it would all bring that into one. That clears my?
Yeah, I think so.
And again, this was a resolution.
Right.
So a better answer, you could better answer when we find out a little bit more.
Right. So you guys are looking into it too?
This is just an official request to pursue and see, in fact, how it is financed and so forth.
All right. Keep me posted.
Any other citizens present to address the board tonight? Hearing none. Counsel, excuse me, counsel comments?
How we doing our first live YouTubers out there?
We're still going. That's all I can, there's the camera.
Five people watching.
The number five beside the person up there. All right, I'll, no comments from the council? All I have to say is, you know, the Fourth of July down at the Sullivan City Pool was amazing. The last number I heard was around 600, the fireworks show. There was several people coming inside the park just to watch the fireworks show. So that was last Friday, July 4th.
It was very nice. I sat in my front yard and watched it.
A nice display. There were several other just setting off fireworks that night. Some other things, the trails coming along, everybody's seeing the trail being developed, going out to the lake, giving the east side safe access to the downtown area to get on this trail system, the extension. It is causing a little bit of some traffic, you know, the 4H fair is coming up. If you don't follow the city of Sullivan on social media, I encourage you to do that. But we have to put it out there that the traffic situation, you may have a detour. There, the housing that's going on on East Washington Street, the nine houses, you see them all at least formed up. But that's going to have some concrete trucks out there. So it may close a block down coming up. But access out to the 4H fairgrounds, you may have to take another route besides East Washington Street this coming week. We wish the fairgoers the best week they've ever had. 4H fair is coming up with a lot of events, a lot of food, everything out there. Fair week's a big week. So. Houses on East Washington going well, trail system's going well and car shows, we've had two in the last couple of weeks here in the city of Sullivan. They were phenomenal. They were fantastic. Lot of old cars. Oldest one there, I think was 1925 Model A. So.
It was before my time.
As I say, Doug drove it. Now, so we had a lot of great activities coming up. We're in the middle of summer. We are looking out, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, around 30 days, probably a little bit more before school buses are back on the streets. So I know the street department's going to be looking at trees and stop signs and, you know, all the lists that they go through before the school buses get back out there. So the, the police will of course monitor the school bus arms and, you know, awareness of the school buses and the kids and everything back at it. So I think we're around 30 days out, maybe 35 or so, but it's not too far away. We'll have the school buses back on the streets. So. That's my comments. Any other council comments? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn? There it is. David, would you hit in? You moved up to six.